You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Swansea zoning board of adjustment meeting.
Swansea zoning board of adjustment for April 17, 2023. I will pass the call to Ryan Rogers.
Here. Brian Rogers. Bill Gilchrist.
Hi. Oh, here.
Ann Karazinski.
Here.
Lisa Thorne. Eric Calio. Here. Wayne McQuaid.
Here.
James Ward.
Here.
Ellen Curran.
All right, um, seeing as we have a couple of our regular elected board members vacant tonight, I will seek Wayne for Brian, Wayne McQuaid for Brian Rogers, and James Ward for Lisa Thorne.
The agenda for the Swansea zoning board of adjustment meeting of April 17, 2023 is as follows. First item will be review and approval of minutes of March 20th, 2023. Next will be a regional impact vote. Following that, public hearings. ZDA number 23-006, special exception application. Matthew and Maddie Curran request a special exception pursuant to section 3AA, article B of the zoning ordinance to construct a DADU detached accessory dwelling unit at 75 South Road, tax map 31, lot 8-2 in the residence district. ZDA 23-005, follows that, special exception application. Hillstone Land Consultants, DLLC, on behalf of Lesser's Four Seasons Services, request a special exception pursuant to section 5, article B2B of the zoning ordinance for a multifamily use at tax map 73, lot 12-2 in the business district. Followed by ZDA number 23-005, special exception application. Hillstone Consultants, DLLC, on behalf of Lesser's Four Seasons Services, request a special exception pursuant to section 5, article B2J, for a bulk storage and distribution of materials use at tax map 73, lot 12-2 in the business district. There'll be other businesses, Exparte Communications, and there any other businesses may be required.
I believe you have been provided minutes from our March 20th, 2023 board meeting. All of us here were present there at that meeting.
Make a motion.
Go ahead, James.
One of us will make the motion, one of us will second it.
Okay, there we go.
That we approve the minutes from March 27. Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of March 20th, 2023 as presented. Any question on the motion? In terms, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Very good. Regional impact. How do we review the three cases technically behind those who voted for us tonight? Anyone have a?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, ma'am.
That none of the petitions before us this morning are of a regional impact.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that none of the applications on our agenda tonight rise to the level of having a regional impact. Any questions on the motion? You are seeing none? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
No opposed?
No, not. That would have been a little out of order. Okay, thank you. It's unanimous vote, regional impact, there is no more regional impacted hearing. So, we're on to a public hearing, the first one. ZDA number 23-006, special exception application. Matthew and Maddie Curran, Karen, request a special exception pursuant to section 3AA, article B of the zoning ordinance to construct a detached additional accessory dwelling unit, a detached accessory dwelling unit at 75 South Road, tax map 31, lot 8.2. Again, seated for this will be myself, Bill, and Wayne for Brian, and James for Lisa. This is a public hearing, but we'll first hear from the applicant to the sense of what they're trying to do. And then. You can pull up a chair if you'd like, we have a couple up there.
Don't have to stand over.
Maddie?
Maybe.
Maybe.
So, my husband and I, oh, my husband and I, yeah, right there. So, we are planning to build a garage attached to our house, and then a accessory dwelling attached to the garage. The garage will be attached to the side of our house, so the driveway is now, and it's going to be through our garage, and then the dwelling unit will be behind that, in that garage.
Do you have anything that shows where the well is at the garage? Do we have any drawing that shows where the well is at the garage?
No. But the well is on the property, it's not a shared well, but I think that's.
Well is here.
Right.
I think this is where.
Yeah, it should be on the, okay, just on the show. The well is in the back.
Yep, that is on your, like, your septic system is roughly where?
In the front. Oh, yes, okay, so, this is the well right there, and that's the septic here, and we are working with.
It is on Seeprow.
Seeprow, yes, we are working with Seeprow to have the septic revised and the bleach field revised to account for the extra living space.
Did they say you're gonna need that?
Yes.
What size tank do you have?
1250.
What size tank?
1250, and it's gonna be 2,000.
15,000.
Anyway, it's all in the system.
Yeah.
Really?
It'll be well protected. It's a one-bedroom, you anticipate one-bedroom with an office area. Just curious, any reason why you didn't put this a public garage? I mean, I'm just curious, nothing in our ordinance says you have to put it anywhere, but we see them along the public garage.
I think the one-story level is, you know, so they don't have to walk upstairs, and then you don't want some hall, it would be, our house is a one-story house, so it might be a main hall.
This is a public hearing, if any members of the public would like to weigh in, let us know, get our effects, and we'll let you speak at any time.
I have a question, just for my own clarification.
Yeah.
An ABU versus a DADU, is this considered detached, or is it still part of the, why?
Oh, that's good.
Or suited or options?
It's considered detached because it's not actually sharing a door with the house.
The living space.
Oh, so it's detached, yes.
Okay, good, Brad. Okay, thank you. So you have enough parking, it appears, you have four cars contemplated, plus a garage.
You, of course, are gonna continue to live in the main property.
Yes.
Have you done any of the permitting that's required, you know, you're supposed to go through some steps and get a few things. You're, you, working on the septic stuff, but it hasn't been certified, hasn't been installed yet, so it can't really be certified yet.
Right, we are working with them, and it's my understanding that he's going to have it approved by the state and all of that.
And you'll need a building permit?
And we'll, we still need a building permit, yes. We're gonna be working with K and J Dean, and they're gonna be helping us with that.
Good though.
Yeah.
There's no Seeprow.
Okay, that's good to know.
Little questions on the board? Any, do any members of the public have any questions here? Anything else you'd like to add? The double.
No, that's pretty much it. I can forget it too.
All right. Any other questions? All right, we're closed with public hearing. And anyone have any comments before we get to the questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No other questions or comments?
So our approval, the approval is still subject to their, whatever, we're not saying, we don't need for the purpose, approval.
They're working through, with Michael, he's sat right here.
I expect that, I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah, I've got a company here today, he's working with them.
Yep.
So, keep in the event this does ask the other questions, would that be, would our motion be contingent on this? I think that's what we're, or we just assume that it could. I don't think we need to, I don't think we need to. Apologize for targets. Good timing. Thank you. All right. Public hearing is closed, if anyone has any comments or questions, if not, we'll move to our checklist. Okay. Do we agree that the proposed use is similar to one or more uses already authorized in the district and is in an inappropriate location for such a use? Ann?
Yes, we haven't heard any evidence compared.
James?
Yes, I think it's exactly what the district is, all residential.
Wayne?
I agree with Jay and.
Nope.
I agree.
And I do too, residential use in a residential area seems to make sense. Select carries number two. Do we agree that such approval would not reduce the value of any property within the neighborhood, within the district, nor otherwise be ignorant, injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood? Let's see, Wayne?
I would say it would not reduce the value of any property or cause any injurious, obnoxious, or offensive, anything offensive to the neighborhood, based on the designs that we've seen, anyway, it's been constructed, almost like a garage.
Bill?
I agree with Wayne.
Ann?
I agree, the applicant has demonstrated a desire to keep the addition consistent with the rest of the property, so we appreciate that design consideration.
James?
Yes, the location of the detached accessory dwelling unit is not gonna make an impact on neighborhood, it will not be injurious anymore.
Good, I mean, it's no value, I have no evidence in terms of that value of any property we're holding out, so I agree. We agree that there will be no nuisance or serious hazards, serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians? James?
I can't see how you're.
Wayne?
I agree.
Bill?
I agree.
Ann?
Yes.
And I defer. And then lastly, do we agree that adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of this proposed use? Bill?
Yes, with the condition that they install, say, approved for the septic system prior to the public access.
Thank you. Ann?
Yes.
James?
Yes, as long as the well has sufficient capacity to carry the addition potentially.
Thank you. I do too, thank you, Bill, for qualifying that. That's it, we've got to the end of our questions.
I have a question.
Sure.
Sarah made a list of suggested conditions to the approval, except that they're all covered by statute or by our ordinance, aren't they? Do you want those?
They don't have to be in there because they are covered by the ordinance, but it's helpful if they are in there because they'll be in the notice of decisions, so it provides more clarity to the applicant to have it spelled out as such.
I'll make a motion that we approve with those four conditions, and the fifth one being the installation of a four bedroom septic system, even though it would be covered under the CO.
Excellent.
On page two, Beverly.
Under departmental. Yes. We have started, why am I here? If I'm too visual, too visual, the septic.
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded, right?
I think we had a second, I think we had a second. So the motion.
Right. It's been moved and seconded.
Okay, sure.
It's been moved and seconded, we've put the application, the conditions that within town's memo as well as Bill's addition of the, for the septic system. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the petition, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Good, so, I have a, I am going to step down from the next two applications, because my employer owns a budding property, so, Bill's gonna take over as chair, I will give a seat to be coming in front, and we'll keep things rolling along.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a special exception application. Hillstone Land Consultants, DLLC, on behalf of Lesser's Four Seasons Services, request a special exception pursuant to section 5, article B2B of the zoning ordinance for a multifamily use at tax map 73, lot 12-2 in the business district. We'll seek Adam Malhern for Keith Keel. Public hearing is open. Sarah, do you have any, do you have comments?
Property is 2.58 acres, it has frontage book on West Swansea Road and West Street. The staff memo does not show tax map or a tax card because this property was subdivided last summer from parcel, the tax map numbers were kind of messed up on this parcel, so they've all been fixed, I'm not sure what it was subdivided from specifically, but a larger parcel that is all undeveloped, and then a year or so before that, it was subdivided from the farmhouse that you see to the west of the proposed development. For the multifamily use, they're asking to build five one-bedroom apartments that will be directly south of the proposed commercial use, separated by pergola and a landscape display area. It'll have a separate entrance off of West Street, and they intend to tie into West Swansea Water and the municipal sewer. I've spoken with DPW about the sewer connection, and they don't see a problem with it, I don't have a will serve letter or anything for the water.
Thank you.
I think of it.
John, how we doing?
Good. John Newman for the record, John Newman for Hillstone Land Consultants, here on behalf of Lesser's Four Seasons Services. So, Sarah went over overall, I'm gonna just walk through the site plan quickly, and then I can go over the back some on the criteria for the special exception.
Is it possible, John, to rotate it somewhat, some people in the public that might have interest could see, we have full-size plans here.
Okay, yeah. Most people see, I stay, stay out of the way, I guess, man. So, we're here tonight for two special exceptions, one being that it's multifamily use in the business district, the second one being for bulk storage in the business district. So, as Sarah had mentioned before, there's proposed landscaping business here, being separated by what's depicted here in this red section, this would be a pergola, so just basically open cover area, they would do outdoor storage for grills, patio furniture, those type of things in between there, that would separate where the residential five apartments are here. The overall idea is to break up the residential from the commercial, however, it's still uniform from the road. So, the applicant really wants to have from Route 10 to make it look like it's a commercial business and fits in on the business district. The rear-facing portion would be more residential-looking, the idea for splitting the driveways, so the commercial driveway servicing the business up in the front would come directly off of Route 10, that's been already permitted with the DOT, so the Neanderthal DOT has approved and reviewed these plans for the use here off of this driveway. The second driveway would come off for the residential use off of West Street, this would break up and make the residential into more of the residential neighborhood, so West Street is almost all residential, behind the rear of the lot is the zoning line between residential and the business district. So ultimately, this project is a blend and helps transition between a business use and a residential use. So, overall, they're gonna be, these areas that are here would be paved, so paved driveway coming in off of Route 10, there'd be 14 outdoor bulk storage areas, these outdoor bulk storage areas would be used for mulch, stone, so it'd be colored stone, gravels that people would buy for landscaping around their houses, driveway upgrades, compost materials, and compost and soil. And then in the rear lot, there would be a 20 by 30 foot covered salt storage area, so that'd be salt for sale.
John, could we focus on the multifamily?
Certainly, yeah. So, we'll walk through the criteria for the multifamily. One of the first facts is the proposed use is similar to one or more of the uses already authorized in the district, and it is an appropriate location for such use. So, Hillstone, we have obtained special acceptance for multifamily development in the business district in the past and throughout town, so you know this use has been authorized in this district. Subject site is an appropriate location for proposed use, the surrounding uses to this property consists of a mix of residential, commercial, industrial, which is compatible with the project, that's what the project is proposing, so as mentioned, it's a transition between business use and residential use. Based on these existing uses and the fact that the business district is along the corridor that it is comprised of a mix of residential, commercial, industrial uses, we believe that the subject site is an appropriate location for the mixed-use project with multifamily housing. Second criteria being such approval would not reduce the value of property within the district, nor otherwise be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood. So granting this exception for mixed use with multifamily development in the business zone would not reduce property values within the district, nor will this project be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood. The proposed use will fit in with the surrounding mixture of uses in the district, and the Neanderthal Department of Transportation has approved the proposed curb cut for this proposal. Over the years, we have found a new development that is compatible with the surroundings will typically increase surrounding property values. Number three, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicle or pedestrians. So granting this special exception for a mixed use with multifamily housing development in the business zone will not result in a nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. This project will be designed to meet standard engineering practices as well as local and state regulations for both vehicular and pedestrian travel and safety. And as we've split, the commercial business use from the residential provides a more safe and split use to keep the residents separate from where oncoming traffic and, you know, people coming home with trucks and trailers, that adds to the safety and the pedestrian and vehicular traffic. This project will provide for adequate safety distance along the highway as issued by the DOT, and there will be no off-site improvements required for this project. This project will not create any nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Fourth fact, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operations of the proposed use. This proposed development will have adequate and appropriate facilities for the proper operation of the proposed use. This project will undergo a complete site plan review, which will ensure that all the details are provided to support the proposed development. This project will be serviced by municipal sewer, municipal water, or the West Swansea Water Service and Underground Utilities. So our client is in touch with the West Swansea Water Precinct, determine flows, certainly the residential is gonna utilize it for domestic, and then they're gonna look at if there's enough capacity for the commercial use and also for fire sprinkling. If there's not enough capacity, likely there'll be an underground storage tank for the fire use, and that can either be fed by backfeeding off of the municipal water or the West Swansea Water, or potentially add a well that could feed that tank, and that would feed with booster pumps to fill the sprinkler system. And the fire departments requested that there be a hydrant added off of that tank.
So there will be a tank?
There will likely be a tank, the only thing that it depends on is if the water precinct is able to say that there's enough capacity, if they can provide enough water for fire sprinkler. It's unlikely, though.
Pressure or capacity.
Both. So it is unlikely we're anticipating up a underground storage tank, probably a 25,000-gallon underground tank for a fire system. And that would be turned in when we do, if it moves to plan anymore, we would submit all those details on that tank. So, we've discussed that it's likely that.
But there has been contact with the West Swansea Water Company?
Yes. And as mentioned, that that contact is through the applicant, not Hillstone.
Anybody else you'd like to add?
No, I'd like to open up for questions.
Michael, do you have any comments on the application? Anybody else have any questions of the applicant?
I know that this is most likely gonna be going over in more detail to planning board.
board meeting, but I see there's water management areas, stormwater management areas on here. We're supposed to consider whether there any, there's gonna be any injurious nature of this property to the surrounding properties and so on, and so it seems to me that that is a question we should at least consider here. Can you just rough out what the, what the plan is for managing the stormwater?
Yes. So, we, we've gone through drainage, engrading, and as part of the planning board proposal, we'll be submitting a stormwater management report. I'll go with the details on how we're gonna handle all the stormwater on site. This site is gonna be just under the AOT permit level, so we're not gonna need an alteration of terrain permit at the DES level. However, we've designed, any of the sites that we work on, we design to alteration terrain standards. So, this is for treatment of stormwater and then also reduction of your off-flow velocity and, and volumes in a two-year storm. So, what we proposed was an infiltration basin, a treatment swale out front, a infiltration basin at the front. This is gonna also pick up some water that comes off of Route ten. That's a problematic issue with an existing culvert that's, that's just south of the proposed driveway. So, it's gonna pick up that water also from, from off of Route ten. That's an issue when bringing down, infiltrating and treating it. Very large storms would backfill. We have a culvert going across, and then there would be a rain garden in the back, and then ultimately outfalling to the wetland that is to the north, northwest corner of the property. So, the, the rain garden is out there, so that's, they add a filter material lower, which is, allows the water go through, retreats the water that's there. So, a portion of the property would drain to that area, and then we also have it connected to the front detention area as well.
And, and because though, there will be snow removal on the, on the property, is there gonna be things like, you know, chemicals for the, for snow treatment that are gonna be pushed into these areas that are then gonna drain into the wetlands and stuff like that?
Yeah, well, some portions to the, the west would go, and then they'd go through a grass treatment swale, and then ultimately to the rain gardens, that provides further treatment.
Infiltration.
Yeah, and then out front, right, correct, it would go through treatment swales and then into infiltration basin.
Okay.
Did I hear you correctly that there's currently a drainage problem that you're addressing?
There, there's water that tends to pool, and it comes across Route twelve with an existing culvert.
Okay.
So, we're gonna pick up that water. It's, it's very flat right there, so water doesn't really go anywhere. It comes out of that culvert. So, it would take that problem and alleviate it from, from up here, just on the south side of the proposed driveway.
And is that, is that water ponding on your, on the property itself?
Yes, and in the right of way, Route ten.
Okay.
I'm, I'm pretty much done.
Next question. You wanna go first?
I'm okay, Wayne.
Okay. I see you have a dumpster in, on the side where the business is. Where, where will the proposed multifamily units, where would they throw their garbage, or do they walk across that?
Potential that they either handle it, so when we submit these items for planning board, we would handle that. Either they break it out and they have their own trash receptacles, or they have to take it to the transfer station themselves. This dumpster here would be for the business.
So, they're not owning those, right? They're renting? Are they rentals?
These are rentals.
Okay. Rental people don't generally go to the transfer station on their own.
Right. So, they, we could specify before it goes to planning board on if there's separation between that or if they use it or...
We wanna keep separation. We don't want the people, or children perhaps, that live in those buildings going over to the business side. Sorry, go ahead.
According to, you know, the questions so forth, adequate appropriate facilities is one of the requirements that we have to look at for this. And I know you've mentioned that a underground storage tank for water would be potentially necessary for this. That being said, I don't see kind of a posted potential spot for that. Is there adequate space on the property to incorporate this in some fashion? And if so, is there kind of an idea where that would be?
We, there is adequate room on the property. That has not been located on our plans, but I can go to what we have for utilities. Most likely, it's going to be close to where our water line comes off of. So, the water line would feed off of West Street. Sewer connection will also be in that area, so we'd be looking towards that end of the residential building area there to place the tank.
And that would be?
Right in this lot. So, the, the water line, this, this dash line here is where the water and sewer are connecting.
Okay.
So, this is the water line, the water end of, coming in this end of the building from here.
Sure.
So, we either, if there's capacity, the back divet tank would come up there, or if there's a well to the rear of the property, then we would be a line across that divet.
Okay.
It would be closest to the building. So, with the separation between these two buildings, there would be sprinklers for just the residential side, so it's gonna be situated as close to that residential portion as possible.
And you feel that, you know, even though you have a proposed stormwater management area and then sidewalk and so forth, that there would be adequate space?
Yeah, so there's that, that setback that's along the front there. Almost right for that thirty-foot mark. You're talking with a, with an underground tank, a twenty-five-thousand-gallon tank is fifteen to twenty feet in diameter and about thirty-five.
Any other board members have questions?
With respect to the multifamily area, is there gonna be a sidewalk all the way to West Street? Or, or is...
No, there currently is not a sidewalk connecting to West Street.
And I noticed there weren't, weren't any comments from department heads, but is there sufficient space in there for, for fire apparatus to get in there? You're wrong. If there's gonna be children living there, because we don't know who's gonna be living there, if their bus stop is out on the road and they have to walk in the road to get there, I don't know. I'm just, don't know where.
There is an existing sidewalk on West Street right now.
Right, I mean, I mean between the, between the apartments and, yeah, between the apartments and the road.
Oh, so on site on the driveway?
It's just a question about who's, who's gonna reside there and, and whether, you know, that, obviously, that's a planning board type of thing, but we don't know who's gonna live there, so just trying to see if there's...
In terms of danger to pedestrians, there'll be pedestrians walking down the driveway. That's what it looks like.
That's what I'm saying, is, yeah. Thank you for...
It would appear they're all one-bedroom, right?
They're not gonna be families there, most likely, but there'll still be pedestrians walking down the driveway. That's the only way they'll get to West Street, if they're gonna walk.
If they're gonna walk.
Most likely, they'll drive.
We can make a recommendation to the planning board that they consider that. Any other board members? Any members of the public who are here who would like to comment on the application? This is the multifamily aspect. If so, we just need to have your name for the record.
I'm Judy Welch. So, are, are your apartments gonna have a foundation, what, what kind of foundation are they gonna have? Like, are they gonna have a cellar?
There would not be a basement at this point. It would, it would be a slab on grade or foot crosswalks.
So, right where you have those houses, your apartments, when we have a lot of rain, get puddles there, normally it doesn't puddle there, and when it puddles there, I get water in my cellar. That tells me the water table's pretty high, and when you put more foundation, you're gonna spread the water out. I don't want it in my cellar.
If we move into the planning board stage, we would end up designing, doing test pits out in this area. As we've already kinda checked soils and across the property, the best soils were down on this, this end of the property. But certainly, the, the stormwater management would handle any off-site flow off, off of the site for impacts from this project.
So, you're saying that presently, water doesn't have anywhere to go except into the ground, and you're gonna manage the stormwater so that it would flow into the area where you're gonna...
It would slow down before it goes down and soaks into the ground and...
So, you'd be directing the water into a place rather than letting it just...
That's right.
But you're directing it for a line house and one of those...
Between, right, between both areas, it'd be split on stormwater going to these two areas. The, the rainwater is ultimately gonna go into the ground, but based on our stormwater report, it's unlikely that we can see any impact off-site. You're reducing the velocity going off-site, so it's gonna end up going to the ground. You're gonna have the same amount of water in the ground before and after.
I, I also don't like the, the idea of salt being stored there. I don't have town water. I have my own well, and it's what they call a wash well. So, I don't want it contaminated.
Judy, we'll, we'll address that in the next public hearing.
Okay.
When they're asking for a special exception for the bulk materials, and one of the focuses will, will be on the salt shed itself. We, we have the same concerns that you do. But for right now, we're just focused on the multifamily application that they have.
And I, and I'm still concerned with, you know, where the water's gonna go. I mean, it doesn't happen every year, but, you know, once in a while, it's too much, you know? And it just, just seems different.
Judy, are you, are you the property across West Street from, from here? Okay.
Yeah, I'll be looking at it.
Anyone else have any questions?
Keith Tebow, represent SCS Housing Inc. We own a Head Start facility across on the other corner there. I'll, I'll hold back my question about the bulk storage until we get to the next, the next application or, yeah, okay. But, you know, in larger sense, are you increasing or decreasing the amount of impervious surface pre and post-construction? This is a pretty involved construction. I like it. But you have a, have you, have you figured out whether or not you're gonna have more or less impervious surface of it?
There'll be more impervious surface than the existing condition, as most of this area, this is all field now, and there's gonna be gravel, and then there's gonna be these darker areas. These are gonna be proposed pavement, and then the building, obviously. So, the stormwater management will be based on that increased impervious area to handle that increase run-off.
No gravel, parking area or...
Yep, so this area out in the, in the back here, this is all gravel.
Yeah.
And this darker portion here is paved. So, anywhere where there's parking, there, this is paved, and this is also paved, it's just a layer of asphalt.
Thanks, Steve. Nice move.
Who's else? I think the board's done a great job of asking a lot of the questions I was going to ask, but in no particular order. Your client is not here to hear this, but my grandfather and father owned this property. They left it to, my father left it to our brother. When he sold it, he said he was told it was just going to be a landscaping business, and I feel like this is bait and switch that we're now being faced with this, going on that property that was farmland for years and years. I don't know of any other five apartment buildings in that area. The number of cars coming out of there, especially if it's at, people going to work when kids are waiting at the bus stop, that's, that's a concern of mine, is traffic trying to get in and out of their parking. The most beautiful tree in town is sitting right on the corner of their property. I hope that doesn't have to be taken down. It's a beautiful sugar maple, and that would be heartbreaking to see that being taken down. Somebody mentioned they're all one-bedrooms. I presume there won't be kids there, but is that, is that the case, or do we also need to worry about kids playing near the, near the street? Judy has had accidents happen at that, that's the worst traffic light in town, and she's had, we've had accidents where the car went right into her yard.
Twice.
And a couple times, they went right across, right across where those apartments would be right now, that we've had vehicles in the field because they missed that light. I'm also wondering about the hours of operation, the noise of the heavy equipment that's gonna be coming in and out there, it's gonna upset the neighbors. And in what order are these things presumed to be constructed? What's coming in first? And where will all that equipment be in the process?
Okay. Forgive me if I don't remember all the questions, so you can remind us as we go. The trees that are existing, those all remain. They're proposing a substantial planting, so conifers along the back here, along all the residential areas to just provide buffer, visual buffer there, and then trees and, or just lower shrubs along the front. So, since they're a landscaping company, they really wanna make it look nice, and they're gonna, they're gonna spend quite a bit on plantings along Route ten. So, currently, there's, there's no vegetation other than, than grass along Route ten, so there's gonna be a lot of plantings there. But certainly, the existing trees that are over on this, this property line here would remain. As far as safety for, you know, vehicle traffic, it was split to kinda keep the residential separate from the commercial. So, the commercial meets all the DOT regulations for safe site distance. This is a good location because you're able to see further, you're further away from this intersection. The residential is about a hundred and fifty-five feet from the intersection here. That would, if you said, you know, twenty-foot long, we're talking probably about five, five to six cars could stack in this area here before the stop sign.
And they do that now, trying to turn left onto Route ten, so...
Yep, so they're gonna have to...
...get out.
Right, we, we have a stop bar and a stop sign on the proposed land for even the residential. The commercial is, it's required. Also, for the residential driveway, we have a stop sign and a stop bar, so they're gonna end up waiting just like any other intersection in town. So, they'll be sitting in the driveway till they can make that left, and then you're gonna have that queuing of five cars. And once it goes before planning board, this would be something that we'd address as traffic and, and, you know, number of cars staggering, how many impacts to, to peak traffic, whether morning commuting hours, and that would be, will be something to plan with.
And what's his, his idea all along?
I, I can't speak to that. I'm covering, I mean, I don't know if this, this was always in his, in his plan or if it's kind of adapted. In the past, it was, he was looking at three apartments when they first submitted. However, in order to get the, the multifamily as a special exception, you need a minimum of five apartments. So, he's going in at the minimum. He could do up to thirty apartments of the multifamily in the district here. So, it changed from three to five to meet the minimum.
Are they then single-story?
Single-story.
Harper-Dewes School, I live at seven-five West Street. So, even though I'm not in a, even though I'm not at a butter, I sit at my picture window or in my gazebo, and I look out across that field. It's, like my sister said, was in our family for a hundred years, and I know that's neither here nor there, but it's just gonna hurt my heart every day. It seems that field developed, and I don't agree with putting any exceptions for it. I don't, I like the idea of the driveway onto West Street. Start out being a, the business, I think it should just stay the business and not be a multifamily.
Just for clarification, a special exception in the ordinance indicates that the use is permitted. The special exception requirement is that... The special exception requirement is that proposed use come in front of the zoning board first, so it's an extra layer. And then as John mentioned, prior to the change in the ordinance, was it 21? In 22, which was voted on last year, this could have been a three unit multifamily, could have been a single family. But with the zoning change that was voted on in March of last year, residential uses were removed from the business zone for the business district. And as John mentioned, the minimum size for a commercial residential property is five units. His original plan was three and we of course have no idea what transpired in the negotiations between the parties, but it was originally presented to the town as a three unit multifamily in conjunction with the commercial use.
I guess I just don't understand in that zoning, how can you get the special section, whatever it's called?
Well, there's four criteria and you heard it with the previous applicant, that the board through the chair went through the four items that needed to be satisfied, satisfied in an affirmative way. And in that particular application, the board did agree with the detached dwelling unit that, that met the requirements of a special exception. In this case, their original plan for three units would have required a variance, which is a much more difficult hurdle to cross typically, not always, but typically than a special exception. It's important to understand that it is a permitted use and the zoning contemplates this type of development on this type of property in the, in the business district. It's just going through the extra review of the zoning board. And many of the questions that you have will be answered and addressed anyway at the planning board level, especially with regard to drainage. They, they do have to maintain the, the water accumulates onsite. As I've looked at that site through the years, I hope this will be an improvement because that was always very wet at the Easterly side when it came, when the water came across from the, I'm sorry, yeah, for the Easterly side of the site, the Westerly side of the road. When the water came across through the culvert from the east side to the, for the west side to McPhail's and then settled out, it was always very wet here and they're going to have to deal with that and not, not direct water in any other direction. It's got to stay onsite.
I believe the, the regulation that the planning board will look at is that no water can go to the building properties, no, no extra water can go on the building properties. So they will have to be satisfied that that's true. That's the planning board.
Yeah, but the ducks like to swim in that water out there. They're not seeing out there now. I see them flying every morning and there's eaters every spring. And there were deer at 3:30 this morning when my husband left for work. There were two of them out there. You know?
Yes, sir.
Russ Druskle on 75 West Street. Is John just going to do retail or is he going to leave? Is he going to put all this commercial stuff there? There's no way we'll hold?
If we can hold that until the next application, because we're going to deal with the commercial use right, right after this. Anyone else have any questions?
I guess I did get a little bit too, and maybe you don't know, but the hours of operation and how long have the equipment will be making noise?
You're talking about hours of operation for construction?
That, yeah, when it's, what's going to be constructed first, when, when the noise will be.
John, do you know what the schedule is?
I don't know a schedule. I, I know by the time we go to planning board, we'd have that and we can address hours of operation. Certainly he would comply with any of the town requirements for that for the business side. Likely he's going to build the, the commercial landscaping section first and then utilize the, that's that way he's not trying to occupy or fill these apartments while he's doing large construction next year. But we can certainly put those phases on the plan when we go to the planning board.
Personally, when I look at some of these questions, I look at them in an inverse way and obvious specifics to clearest is what I mean by that. And number two, such approval will not reduce the value of property with the district nor otherwise be injurious, obnoxious, offensive to the neighborhood. I look at that not only as the neighborhood as exists today, but the neighborhood that would, would become if this property was to be transformed into this, which is, which it is not, which it is not now. So I don't, I have not heard a lot of testimony as to what the actual apartments are going to be like. We've kind of made some inferences based on the sizing of the properties or the, of the units themselves. Can you just run through what the proposed apartments and, you know, kind of their layouts and what we're looking at there? Certainly. Thank you.
Forgive me, we just have smaller plans right now. These will change slightly as, it doesn't show the percolator separation on these right now, but this would be the elevation as seen from Route 10, so we're going to have a single level here. These are where the residential is and the commercial here. This is going to be where the break is for the percolator, which is out for the capital.
And these are all single story units with?
These are all single story units, one bedroom, floor plans are here, so they're 576 square feet each apartment, 16 feet wide, 36 feet deep. The bedrooms are on the Route 10 side.
Okay.
So entrances are all, as mentioned, towards the residential side, towards the rear. The front of the building would be, first three feet would be veneer stone, app and then metal, metal siding. So if you want to take a look at these, these are the floor layouts, simple one bedroom.
Are you going to have washer and dryers onsite or are they going to?
Yes.
Go to work?
Yep.
So each one, each unit's going to have its own one?
I believe so. They have, because this one's on the, they have closets next to the restrooms. I would assume that's where they would have them and they might be optional, but that's something we could address too with, with the planning board if it has a washer and dryer.
Well, I don't, I'm just wondering, you know, how often people will come and go and it wouldn't be unusual for there to be even a small family in a one bedroom, one bedroom.
These are 576 square feet, pretty small, it's a very small.
It's a studio more.
It's more of a studio.
Hey, I spent, I spent time in the 650 square foot space.
I, you know, mothering three kids in the house, you know, part of that side.
And then follow up on that question is why I related to, you know, injurious, obnoxious or offensive. I'm just thinking about the quality of life of the people, you know, in terms of, you know, and I think Dan was referring to that as well, just being able to, you know, come back and forth through West Street. Do they have to travel by vehicle? Is there going to be a way to access where they're not walking out the actual, you know, right of way? And then just day to day activities. I mean, is there going to be any access on the Route 10 side, like maybe somewhere where people can come back and forth, porch, things of that nature? Just trying to get a feel for what these apartments are going to be like.
Right. So there's no connection between the Route 10 side and direct. Currently we just have a sidewalk in front of the units. If it's brought up by the planning board, we could potentially bring that sidewalk down along the driveway to connect with West Street sidewalk with five apartments that are single bedroom. There's not doing much traffic on that little shorter driveway that I don't perceive that that would be any issue with someone walking down the sidewalk. It's going to be 18 feet wide, over 22 feet wide of the parking area. Parking, the little parking space is nine feet wide. A drive aisle even on Route 10 or a town road is 12 feet wide. So you're going to have enough space that someone could walk alongside you with a driveway signal without, with a single car coming in or going out. You don't want to have that many vehicles in and out of a park.
All it takes is one pedestrian.
Adam, are you, are you asking if somebody can, can sit outside in the lawn chair and maybe have a hibachi? I mean, is there, I mean, what is, I mean, if they want to?
Well, I, I was just, my personal questions are kind of the quality of, of apartments. Because what we're talking about here is the, is adding a multifamily unit that's going to be occupying potential Swansea members of our community. And so I make sure that these, these conditions don't create an obnoxious or, you know, injurious atmosphere. That's, that's really what I'm looking at. That's my direction, how I'm kind of viewing it. I know some of these things would be covered in a, in a planning scenario, but it's a question that we have to answer.
So there is no outdoor amenities currently at this time that's been discussed or shown on plan, so if something like that, there's going to be someone out there with a hibachi and partying until 3:00 in the morning and creating the obnoxious to neighbors or anything like that. But their quality of life, living actually, landscape, you know, landscape business is not overly loud. It's not like an industrial business that's manufacturing, making a lot of noise all day and between trucks and upfront end loading, loading vehicles, pretty minor. The people that are renting there will probably be working during the day or soon. So I think their quality of life on the other side of this is probably closed by them their own work. We could certainly bring that up at the planning board if it's required to have outdoor amenities or something for the apartments. So currently there is nothing to have them outside of their apartment though, you know, other than if they want the, the ball field or something nearby.
Okay. I appreciate your, your answers and so forth. And I just have one last follow up and I'll, I'll hand them over so to speak. And this is a question I'm just curious about. Was the proposed three bedroom situation on the same footprint as what they proposed five bedroom that we're seeing?
Okay, I believe this, so I, I don't have the layout for the three bedroom with me. I believe it was shorter from north to south slightly compared to the three bedroom.
So the idea kind of these apartments, the size they are, were kind of the idea whether they were three or five, that's kind of what I'm getting at.
The three bedrooms are the same size.
Yes.
The apartments didn't change that.
Just the size of the apartment.
The家具的switch was solely so they didn't have to get a drainage system.
That's, that's kind of the answer that I was expecting, so thank you.
Are any of the apartments going to be handicapped accessible?
We, we currently don't have any of them handicap accessible, but that could be something that they, they could look at doing easily. They're all at grade parking right up front, so it'd be easy to make an A to A kind of thing.
Other than the reason to have a sidewalk to the sidewalk on West Street.
John, does the, does the drive off of West Street extend to the commercial building? And if so, why? I'm just curious because they'll have great shading here.
It does. So the driveway provides, so there's a garage overhead door with a drive through. So there's a door on the other side of the commercial business so that if he had a trailer or had to unload items inside that he's selling inside of that building, he can bring them in and unload them there or he's bringing in a piece of equipment or something like that, a piece of stone, he can bring them inside the building. So there is a connection point through the building so they can open up a door. So that's how it's connected to the commercial building from West Street side. So that would be a very, very low use and that's not an everyday private use.
But that driveway would be utilized by commercial vehicles as well as residential?
It could be if he, if he was pulling something in and out of that, that building, he could, he could access onto West Street or vice versa and go to the other way.
The big way you're describing that would be very rare.
That would be very rare, yeah.
I think it just lends more credence to the request for a sidewalk.
You could say like very rare, but how do you know it's going to come here?
Yeah, just knowing, you know, your everyday traffic that comes in to utilize these parking spaces isn't going to start every day driving through the building as a loop, which is not practical to be opening doors.
Just I had a situation not that long ago where, you know, I was picking up my, my kid, he goes to Culver, you know, which is right across from where you're here. And I was coming up Southwood and Church retreat, taking a left on the West Street and then a right on Swansea Street. And there's that one spot, there's no light. And there was a kid who was riding his bike and he was right on the side of the road and I came this close to ending his life and, you know, and it was just, it's a quick, quick thing. And, you know, he was in the street, probably not often that he's doing that, not much traffic coming through, but it can happen. I'm glad it didn't occur, so I'm cognizant of those kinds of things and it can happen. So I would definitely suggest and recommend some, some level of access because people are going to want to be able to travel back and forth here. And it could be just the once, but it's worth the.
I'll bet you want to ask here. How much is the child on the plane?
I'm rolling the window down, talking to him, it's just like, he was shaken up too because he knew exactly how close. And I'm like, I'm not angry, I'm just very, adrenaline's way up here. Go home right now. Of your mom.
Yeah. Anyone else have any questions? Any members of the public have any questions? And we'll close this public hearing with a special exception of the multifamily. Any board members have any comments or questions before we get to the questions? Is the proposed use similar to one or more of the uses already authorized in the district? And is it in appropriate location for the use? Helen?
I'll start with, it is an appropriate location for the use. I'm struggling with kind of figuring out a location that is a business and a residential use at the same time, attracting awareness of where that is. But I think there's a couple within the area that have some apartments and so forth. But anyway, yes, I'll say, yes, there is multifamily. It's a use, it is approved use and it is authorized in the district and it is an appropriate location, so yes.
One that is somewhat similar from our residence to business, not as close, but very close, is Paul Thomas's property where Groundville was and right adjacent to it is a single family home. And that's just, yeah, so it's, that's the only one that comes to mind, family, but. Billy Brewer, you guys' apartments love it. Just a reminder that the public area is closed, although we do appreciate the comments from the sidelines. Wayne?
Yes, I agree with that.
Yeah, I, I have to agree, Adam, on question one.
Jay? I agree that that's a acceptable use for, for the business district. I would feel more comfortable if there weren't that connection to the building through that residential parking lot. I like the idea that the residential area is separate from the business area, but in terms of the location in the business district, this is an appropriate use. Thank you.
With such, if we were to approve the project?
I would just.
Yes. I forgot. I used to skip on those. Isaiah Willoughby reminded me many years ago. Do we agree that such approval would not reduce the value of any property within the district nor otherwise be injurious, obnoxious or offensive to the neighborhood? And I would just remind the board what the definition of obnoxious, offensive and injurious is from, that we received from the Hampshire Municipal Association. Wayne?
I would say yes. It, it would not reduce the value of any property in the district based on what has been presented to us. I've heard some of the concerns of the people that live in the area with the, the water runoff, but I think the developer, you know, the applicant is addressing that.
Thanks.
Helen? I, I would say yes for the same reasons that, that Wayne brought up and the only concerns I have in injurious or obnoxious again is, I think, what will also be covered in question four, and I'm going to insist on this, is that we put some caveat that says this is to be approved, that there is some way for people in the districts to be able to go back and forth on that driveway area without actually physically having to walk on, on the actual driveway. So a sidewalk of some sort.
Jay?
I agree with Adam and Wayne. I think, I think most of the concerns I have are going to be addressed at the planning board level. I do think that the, that this is not going to reduce the value of any property in the business district. The only way it would be injurious is if somehow it gets through the planning board without the planning board following the procedures they're doing. So yes, I say I'm affirmative about that, although not reduced. I think they're not injurious. Sorry, I had to verbalize that.
Dan?
I, I'm going to say yes, and I want to speak to Adam. I like the way he phrases his thoughts about the future, where we want to have some reflection on what's happening, not just now, playing Swansea in a hundred years and the number of people who are working from home now, full time, is, is very high. And the number of people who are working from home now, full time, is very high, as is the people who live, have multiple people living in single bedroom homes. So I, I do think we want to address some of our concerns in three and four because people who would be living here would need to think about their enjoyment of that property.
Thank you. I'll agree. Do we agree that there'll be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians?
I think, I think it's something that could, could be achieved. So I would be a yes, provided, provided we put in a stipulation for for the planning board to give some serious thought to pedestrian traffic. That there be a connection between the two businesses. I don't, I think that places a burden on the, on the business. It's nice to have those two overhead doors to be able to move some equipment in and out, particularly for repairs. So we need to put consideration for that, but I'll say yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes, I think I agree with Adam though, that there needs to be a sidewalk alternative for the apartment dwellers to get, you know, pedestrians who might be visiting to move from West Street to the apartment.
I will say, I'll take it from the vehicle side perspective first. I mean, we have two curb cuts that are occurring, one's on Route 10, the other one on West Street. 10, you're looking at, you know, almost strictly commercial business. I think that DOT does a pretty decent job of defining characteristics of what those curb cuts need to look like. And I think the expectations of business operation hours on landscaping business are probably pretty predictable in terms of the flow. You know, late night stuff's probably very low, you know, where accidents are more likely. And from the pedestrian side of the residential use, I have the concerns I've had, as I've already stipulated before, on access. But I don't know if this is a bigger picture discussion to have. But Route 10 is really developing quite a bit over the last couple of years. We're seeing a lot more residential homes being built and multifamily units. There's going to be increased traffic, and it's cumulative. It's not just one property or other. But we're, you know, there's a, I can't recall exactly how many units are being built right across from the Marlowes and, you know, all the stuff that we're seeing here. So there doesn't really seem to be any pedestrian, you know, consideration on Route 10 whatsoever. And we're seeing a lot more residential and not as much business. So, I mean, that's a different discussion.
So I'm going to ask Sarah, once this public hearing is over, before we go to the next one, to give you the bird's eye view of what's being proposed and what's been taken up by Southwest Regional Planning, the state's ten year plan that will address, if this approach will address what your, your concerns are.
So I appreciate that. So to not hold up anything further, I do believe that there is a way to, to say yes to Route 3. I'm talking to the, yeah, to 3. Do the third question here. So I would say yes.
Aren't quite there yet. Thank God. I'll agree. Do we agree that adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use? And we'll just make the caveat that there's been mentioned that the head of our West Swansea Sewer Department has indicated that a connection will occur, and that the applicant has indicated that they've made communication with the West Swansea Water Company. But regardless, they'll either have connection to that or a well, or both, and maybe have a storage tank. So probably will have a storage tank, I think we're pretty sure about that, associated with it. Just on those two issues. Wayne?
Yes, based on what you just said, and what was presented to us is there's exceptions being provided to pick up the water pressure. I would say yes.
Well, I have concerns that would be addressed by the planning board, but I'm not seeing a way susceptible. Parking is sufficient, but for the people who live there to get rid of their trash, I'm not seeing a way to conveniently do that. So I don't know if we can even point that out to the planning board, but I would say yes.
I would say that based on the concerns of water, and there seems to be at least a plan in terms of the tank and so forth, the connection, sewer, again, same thing. My concerns about the, you know, the walkway and so forth. I think it also would make some level of sense to at least address the fact that the residential curb cut also has a commercial potential use, which I think should be made aware of the people living in these apartments, that they truck large and maybe obstructed views and so forth, could be traveling right through where they're going to be coming back and forth. I don't know, signage could potentially help with that in terms of onsite signage or, you know, something that allows that to understand that there's not only just cars coming back and forth. You know, just to alleviate accidents. So yes, if those concerns are met.
Jay?
Echo some of the things. We're talking about adequate and appropriate facilities for the proper operation of the proposed use. Well, proposed use is multifamily residential dwelling. So I think trash is an important facility for use. I think the water, we talked about, sewage, we talked about. I think the other thing which we mentioned was the, the need for hospital for laundry facilities. Something that, something would make living there appropriate. And I would hate to think that this was a rental apartment with so few amenities that it wasn't attractive for anyone. On the other hand, I'm not going to, I'm not going to be in the position of telling a developer what they're going to provide. I think, I think with the exceptions that I mentioned, the trash and the potential addressing of the water facility, of the laundry facility, I say yes.
So with the laundry, I'm not sure we have the.
I don't know. I'm not sure we do either.
I think it's more of a market, marketplace. But the others that I picked up from you all are the need for trash disposal onsite, the sidewalk, access to West Street, the acknowledgement that we've considered that this drive off of West Street will handle commercial traffic as well, and making certain that the planning board is aware of it. And additional signage to be required to warn visitors as well as residents and commercial, like there's residential use going on there. Do you have a sense of what we can put on as a condition as opposed to a recommendation? And do you feel comfortable communicating?
I definitely feel comfortable communicating it, and I would say it would be in the minutes too. It will be in the minutes of the recommendation. And the minutes of our planning board brackets. I'm trying to think of a condition that would be inappropriate for me to add.
I think the laundry probably would be inappropriate to add.
Yeah, I do think the laundry would be inappropriate as a condition. But I think a sidewalk on the driveway may not be inappropriate as a condition if it's something that you feel needs to be in place for multifamily use to occur on this property. If a trash receptacle on that side of the development needs to be in place for you to consider multifamily on this property, it probably should be a condition.
Well, so I don't, and I don't want to speak to that. I do believe that trash removal needs to be addressed. And the whole point of separating the businesses is if somebody takes personal family type trash and throws it in the dumpster where there's other trash, it might be, I don't know, less safe. I don't, I don't.
Different collection.
Could, could they use the same receptacle, you know, to throw the garbage? I don't know. That's for the planning board. But I think that, you know, if you have a multifamily and no trash removal, it's, you know.
That could be a recommendation for the planning board if they wanted to be conditioned. And as far as signage goes, I think, again, if this use is something that the board is uncomfortable with granting without signage about the type of vehicles that will be using the residential driveway, it's something that I think we should add as a condition.
Okay, so we've agreed to the four conditions, I'm sorry, the four criteria. So we'll accept the motion with a stipulation that onsite trash be accommodated, that the sidewalk from the residential parking to West Street be created, and that sufficient signage to warn both the residential users and the commercial users that this particular driveway is accessible by whole.
I will make a motion to that effect with exactly those words. And make sure you write that I wrote those words. He didn't.
All plagiarized. Do we have a second?
No, I see.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Okay, so the special exception request or application for multifamily has been approved. Sarah's just going to give a synopsis of the plans for Route 10 in this district.
So the town submitted for the state's ten year plan to have the section of Route 10 that goes through West Swansea Village from intersection of South Winchester Street up to, I'm trying to think of it. It doesn't go all the way up to North Winchester Street. It stops either at West Street or Forest Ave. I can't remember the details because it's been months.
It would be near Forest Ave, not West Street.
Okay, because, yeah, I do believe it takes us past West LA Brewery. And so the proposal is to narrow Route 10 through that section of the village area and incorporate a multi-use path, at least on one side. I believe it's going to be multi-use path on the west side, and the existing sidewalk on the east side would be extended through that whole area with the idea that traffic would be slowed down to 30 miles an hour just through that one and a half mile stretch. And there would be five, like flashing beacon crosswalks on one of each of the intersections on Route 10 there. So we're working towards making West Swansea Village safer for pedestrians and non-motorized traffic. However, while we're nominated number one for the Southwest Region, DOT has not picked up our proposal yet. So it's still up here. But once the state approves the ten year plan, it will open up the town for potentially more funding opportunities to accelerate the plan because you'll have evidence that the state's in support of the change. So hopefully that will address some of the concerns with all of the multifamilies that are going into this corridor as well as, you know, things that currently exist because there is significant pedestrian activity and bicycles and, you know, a lot of residents in that area.
Given the, given the discussion about, from the man from the state about speed limits on the other questions the planning board's like for, do we have any faith that people are going to slow down to 30?
Well, the road would be redesigned, you know, so narrowing the road does help reduce traffic.
You got to send a signal that 30 is the appropriate speed, what I heard from that guy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A couple written tickets. Start putting the hammer down.
He said that people are going to go the speed they think is appropriate regardless of what the speed limit is. That's what he told me. That's what he told us all.
True. Okay, we'll keep the same board members. Special exception application, Fieldstone Land Use Consultants, ELLC, on behalf of Lesard's Four Seasons Services, requests a special exception pursuant to Section 5, Article B2J for a bulk storage and distribution of materials used in Tax Map 73 lot 12-2 in the Business District. Forgot to say thank you, Sarah. Nice presentation, impromptu.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Now, welcome to the public hearing, same board members. Sarah, do you have any comments on the application?
The only comment that I have on the application is, well, you won't need to give the synopsis because if I give you comments, it might be confusing before synopsis. I believe it's 14 bulk storage bins on the northern border coming right off of Route 10 there. And those are going to be the landscaping materials. It's proposed to be very similar, if not identical, to the materials and services that Ground Up had been providing on Route 12, and Ground Up is now closed, so that does not exist in Swansea anymore. And then an additional storage bin behind the facility for salt storage. And the only real staff concern with this at this point is the salt storage, while it is supposed to be covered, the plan does not indicate what impervious surface exists underneath the salt storage. This property is over the Alcoa.
Michael?
John, do you have any comments on the application?
Okay, thank you. Welcome back. Thank you.
So as we touched on before, there's the 14 storage bins on the northern edge. So those are the outdoor materials, whether it's stone, mulch, and soils, compost. And then the covered soil or salt shed, that would be impervious, or impervious surface underneath. Right now, we've talked about doing that as pavement underneath that area. And both the salt and also the outdoor storage, they're going to pitch back in grade so that nothing migrates out, so you don't end up with during rainstorms, either the material's washing out into the parking lot or into, you know, out into the open. So the salt shed, especially where there's concern on that, that'll be pitched back. So anything that has tracking or anything else like that, it'll flow back and stay underneath the covering. That way, it's not potential for rain to take it out and flow across the parking lot or around to the other people's ground.
So I want to ask a question. Mike, do you know the construction of the salt shed that we have in terms of the base and the size? Is this conforming with that?
Yeah, well, Sarah and I, you, that and actually, more importantly, the best practices for salt storage. And what he's describing, what I see on plan, conforms with best practices.
The other walls, rigid walls to hold it?
Yeah, I mean, in our case, they're a precast concrete block with silicone or grout between them, but yeah.
Is this going to be similar?
It would be similar, yes, whether it's.
No filtration?
Right. It would be, it would be concrete block that's done more together or a concrete wall around. And that would come up, and then there would be a wood ring structure in a room. And by the time we submit for planning board, we could have that detail on there. On, it's gonna be, and certainly if it was part of the building, we're best to have these.
If you're going to be interior buyers, you'll see a black membrane that was applied to the inside of our concrete as well. The big things to do, the main things to do.
So I don't think there's many questions on the overall plan because we've kind of walked through it already. So I'm going to go into the facts of finding for granting a special exception. Proposed use is similar to one where more of the use is authorized in the district and is appropriate for the location for the use. The proposed landscaping, which will align by the site plans on selling landscaping materials to the general public. Since there's no definition of bulk storage in the regulations, staff has requested that the applicant seek a special exception for the proportion of this business. The resale of materials on this site will consist of selling colored stone products of various sizes, colored mulch, sand, loam, compost, etc. This will essentially replace the former Ground Up business that operated off Route 12 in the town and also in the Business District. Very similar to Maple Hill, where it also sells similar materials. This use will be compatible with the surrounded mixture of uses and will provide a much needed service to the town residents. The subject site is an appropriate location for this retail use as situated along the highway corridor with their other businesses as well. Back in support, number two.
John, just a question. One thing we didn't go over, or maybe not, but is just traffic flow on the commercial side? Could you address how people, how consumers are going to come in and how the materials are going to be distributed and sold, and what you foresee is the flow?
Sure. So all of the commercial traffic, whether it's customers or his trucks coming and going, they're off of the Route 12 driveway, they're going to come in. If it's smaller, there's. If it's smaller, they're just parking right along the building. So you're coming in in a car, a smaller truck, you're going to park there. They can bring in a little trailer, you could stage out back and they could load, so they could use a front end motor to take out if you're buying mulch.
So just, just a quick question is that I know there's some question regarding pavement versus gravel. Just the way this is laid out, people, people coming in, consumers coming in, are going to have to go over the gravel field to park in front of the building, it appears. So why is there that stretch of asphalt along the easterly side? Because that's all gravel.
This is all gravel right here.
So right where your, come back, right there, why is that, that's almost impossible to use to park?
The pavement that leads to the Route 10 side parking.
Yep, so this is all paved right here. And these are paved parking spaces. This is gravel where it's here.
What, right where your finger is, aren't those paved parking, aren't those paved parking spaces on the north side?
These are paved parking spaces, yes.
How would you?
These are paved parking spaces.
Now, how would you get to those without going over the gravel?
You would drive over the gravel.
Drive over there.
So is there a need for all of that pavement for those that are concerned about impervious surface?
So the connections from the, from the band in front of the storage bins down to the Route 10 side parking spaces, why is that there? If it's not, you know, why does it need to be there?
You're saying this, this could be gravel here?
Well, we're saying, why, why is it not?
Why is it not gravel?
Just to, just to keep track, I mean, to kind of separate where traffic would go over here. So this separation is really, you know, you'd either come in with a trailer and park in front of this here, or go to the parking spaces, it would then be, you know.
Oh, you're saying if you wanted to get, pick up something here?
You need to have, yeah, pavement, but you'd be going down here.
You'd have to drive over there.
You would just drive over the gravel.
So you have to drive this way?
Yeah, I don't.
Or would that be gravel too?
I don't think it would be, do less gravel.
Mike?
The question I got for you, I think we're done, and I had a chance to propose that as asphalt, as long as we're here. So when you guys develop your stormwater management plan, is it going to be done in such a way that can handle when that if and when, that all becomes pavement?
Correct. So as I mentioned before, we design based on the alteration of terrain standards. Alteration of terrain from the state at their level, gravel is not any different than pavement. I know a lot of us see it as, you know, we have gravel driveways at our home and anything else. Water absolutely soaks in the gravel driveways. However, when you talk on a state level, it gets compacted, they don't see any difference on it. So when we design it, it's, this gravel area gets designed into our stormwater management system as the same as asphalt. So if it was paved, it's not going to change anything on the runoff calculations or anything in stormwater. So anytime we have something for a gravel driveway, we don't usually model it as, as gravel, just because someone could pave it in the future, and also the state doesn't, doesn't break a difference out between gravel and paved surface.
And you said that the area under the salt bin is going to be paved surface of some sort, but also under the pre-sold material job surplus area too, is that going to be paved as well? You said there's going to be more pavement back there than under the salt bin?
Under the salt bin, yes, would be pavement unless he chooses to do concrete, but as of right now, he said he wanted to do pavement underneath that building.
But I heard you say that there are other places back there that would also be paved. Didn't you say that earlier?
No, so currently, this is all gravel.
That's what I thought you said at first, and then when we were talking about the salt bin, you said that also, under the outdoor storage area, there'd be pavement as well.
Oh, I meant also, this would be paved in front of these storage, outdoor storage bins, the bulk storage that's to the north, yes. So it's paved underneath these bulk storage and then also underneath the covered salt sheds.
And so what would the consumer flow be? Where would consumers go?
So probably the majority of traffic is going to be to these nine parking spaces or these five parking spaces, you know, regular pickup truck and pedestrian.
Is there any reason to go out back for the typical consumer?
Yeah, probably because most of them can't turn a trailer around, there's a lot of space to turn a trailer, just loop through here. So if they're loaded with materials to do a trailer for money that bulk storage, they can bring their truck and trailer and do a loop and turn around to that back outlet off the truck, add the trailer around, the parked cars.
Are they self-loading or are they being loaded by?
They would be loaded by an employee of the landscaping business. They're not self-loading. Such approval would not reduce the value of any property within the district or otherwise dangerous, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood because granting this special exception for bulk storage on the subject property will not reduce property values within the district, nor will this project be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood. The proposed use has been situated and laid out to provide separation and buffering to surrounding residential uses and to focus on commercial use towards the highway. The storage of materials on site for resale will consist of natural materials, which will not create any environmental issues. Best management practices will be followed on site as it relates to the storage of these materials and the business operations on site. This project will be compatible with the surrounding mixture of uses in the district, and the New Hampshire Department of Transportation has approved proposed curb cut for this use and proposal. Over the years, we've found that new development that is compatible with surroundings typically result in a positive impact to surrounding property values. Back in support, number three, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicle or pedestrians because granting this special exception for a mixed-use multifamily and landscaping business in the business zone will not result in a nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. This project will be designed to meet standard engineering practices while local regulations for both vehicular and pedestrian travel. See, top of the DOT has already reviewed and approved the proposed curb cut, the proposal. This project will provide for adequate safe site distance along the highway. The entrance can, there'll be no off-site improvements required for this project. The project will not create any nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Also, there's not going to be any outdoor and bulk storage of fertilizers or hazardous waste, or will be no hazardous waste of fertilizers or those type of items stored on site.
You're willing to accept that as a, as a condition or it's going to be stated?
Right, so potentially, I mean, they could, they could have small bags of fertilizer in here near the building that they sell, but they're not going to do a bulk storage or anything like that. They don't, that's not.
Adam?
Will there be any delivery services directly to consumer, or is this all, or intended delivery services? Meaning, is there going to be an employee of this business that's going to be taking and filling trailers and then driving off to residential neighborhoods and dumping? Or is this going to be all self-serve? Or do you know?
I do not know. I would assume that they're going to end up having a service where they could sell and deliver, but I don't know that they have that option. I would have to definitely have to verify that they would want to do that.
And the rationale, I asked the question, is just again, you know, when you have increased traffic, I mean, I don't know, it's not a massive difference between somebody coming in with a trailer and a truck and filling up and going versus having someone who's employed doing the same. But I was just curious, is there the flow of traffic going back and forth related to that question? So that's, that's the spirit of why I'm asking.
Yeah, so I don't know if they would have it, but I would assume they would. They're going to have their business very similar to ground up. They, you mentioned that they're expecting us to replace, or ground up had that business in town, which did also, people bringing their personal vehicles, their trailers to refill up, and they also deliver. So it's most likely they're going to go that avenue, that they would have a service to deliver bulk materials such as mulch, scrap, and gravel, you know, ground up for driveways. Number four, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operations of the proposed use. This proposed development will have adequate and appropriate facilities for the proper operation of the proposed use. This project will undergo complete site plan review, which will ensure that all details are provided to support the proposed development. This project will be serviced by municipal water, sewer, and underground utilities.
Thank you, John. Do the board members have any questions?
Will there be, so the, the main entrance to the landscaping building is, is in the front or in the?
In the front, so he, he really wants to have the business facing Route 10. Yeah, so, so the majority of the vehicles are expected to come in here, that's the main entrance there. There's a display area at the end of the parking lot, so that's just a grass area, and they, they would have, you know, had a roundback chair, is there any patio, they'd furnish their grills in addition to the cars and display area.
So that's a, so the, and I know, oh, that's display, and then the covered display area that's between the building and the-
Would be similar and probably set up as patio furniture, set up as-
Okay, so, all right, I thought, so the building isn't connected to the residential part, or is that, is there a roof there?
So he, he's saying right now, he would like to do a pergola type roof, so it would be open slab type roof. So it's impervious and that rainwater would go right through it.
Okay.
But it, it is connected between the two of them. There'd be a concrete pad and that pergola type roof.
And, and there's no wall here? Or there's a wall here?
There's no wall on the outside.
Okay. So one could walk from the residential area over inside?
They could, yeah.
Well, and I was thinking about that when Adam was, was asking questions, that if these apartments are single family, get some employees that live there, and they can walk to work, not worry about traffic.
And they can hang out in the display area?
They could hang out, they could hang out on the-
Test out the grills on the patio furniture, yeah.
It's a bocce.
This question, I think, is more for just, you know, how we approach this. There's, seems to be concerns about the types of materials that are going to be stored on, on site. As a, as a board, what is appropriate? Sarah, you can give us some insight, what would be an appropriate conditional response that we would have for types of materials? I know the applicant has suggested, you know, things like mulch and rock and so forth.
The conditions could limit the materials stored to the limits that have been shared, I mean, to the materials that were shared in the application.
And is there any, is there anything that states that the, the applicant couldn't potentially store something else in the future without coming back to either us or?
You could make that as a condition.
We've also noted on the site plan, so now you have the notes on the site plan, so you're, when it gets to planning board, do a, you know, group's site plan and any notes that are included on that site plan portion. So that could always be referenced, you know. You list out these materials on your group's site plan, if they wanted something else, they would have to come back to the plan.
So if there is an aquifer underneath that, there is, so, I mean, I know the materials are all natural, but, and I don't buy mulch because I'm cheap, but if, if mulch is infected with something, like a, I don't know, a bug?
Mulch bug.
Mulch bug, could that, or any other material, if it's got something on it, that could leach right down into the aquifer? So some concern would be.
Which is, which is why they're, they're proposing that it be all impervious underneath, so it'd be a paved surface underneath, and then pitch back, so it keeps everything contained in those spaces, so.
Right, unless, unless we get a flood or something, but okay.
So one of the concerns I'd express to the ownership, because we talk to these people a lot when they come in, was they had rack storage inside the structure, I was concerned about fertilizer storage and other chemical storage was my, my big thing. The mulch and things, certainly there could be mulch bug or, or dyes or things, but I was really worried about fertilizers because these are those big bombs, you know, and all that stuff. He's neither certified or licensed or has any desire to have those. That does not mean that that couldn't be a condition of approval by you or planning. If I'm not mistaken, Sarah, it'd be better for that.
John, with regard to the leaching concern, could you speak to how it might compare with a septic system on a leach field, which most of those properties all have, permitting them anyway?
Yeah, so a leach field system is taking waste from a home into a tank, separates the solids, and then you have to let it go out to your leach field. That then soaks into the ground. The idea is that it treats the water as it goes from the, the bottom of the bed through the natural soil, and the water is clean. The state has set up that it only requires really six inches of clean soil, well, below your septic system to treat that water. With septic systems, you end up with, a lot of times, you know, pharmaceuticals that people use, and they found that it actually treats that out as well. So you do end up with even a residential septic system, you end up with some chemicals leaching out, going out to your leach field that go into the ground, is treated by that bed that's below the piping that goes out to the field, your leach field.
Is there a correlation of that to Ann's question?
So very similar, if, if any, if there was a chemical or something that entered some of this, it'd be very similar in that it got to the soil, so this is paved underneath, so technically the water's not going to go through it.
Right.
It, it could be treated by the soils underneath, similar to a leach field.
Any other board members?
Just, just general concern, when you have a property like this and you, you have bulk storage and people taking things out, out of the bulk storage and putting them in trucks or trailers or whatever, there's going to be some spillage. That spillage is on the pavement, when rain comes, water comes, that spillage is washed off into the gravel and it has to percolate down, and hopefully that, that will protect the, the aquifer from any of the materials there. But to think of it as pristine is foolish. It's, it's going to, it's going to leak in some ways, just, it's not going to be, it's not going to be going directly into the water system. It's going to be going through soil eventually.
It'll be up through soil eventually, yes.
And the only place bulk storage is going to be is out here, because we're, we're concerned with bulk storage, that's what this is, this special exception is all about. So this is the only place that we're going to see bulk storage on the site with addition of salt in that.
Yeah, so the salt shed is still bulk storage, so we have that one out back, but the majority of the bulk storage is out right front here.
One little question, small question. With respect to what Sarah was talking about earlier, where the state is, is considering narrowing Route 10, do we have any idea, are we going to use eminent domain in some instances?
When you make the road narrower, you don't need more land.
Okay.
You need less.
I just, for planning purposes, might the sidewalk, which side of the road do we think it's going to be on? The Cutler side?
Any, any sidewalk placement would be in the state's right way, and no development is allowed within the right way. So for instance, if the sidewalk on Route 10 comes to fruition and it's going to go in front of the landscaping business, it would be outside of the parcel that is outlined for the road.
Okay, so they can't even put plants or trees or whatever in the right way?
No.
So, okay, I'm just trying to, for planning purposes, it would be a shame to put something up and then have to take it down.
Yeah, on Route 10, the setback was just revised to 30 feet from the right of way for Route 10 and Route 12, and so that's why Route 10 looks very wide on the plan that's presented because it's, it's showing the whole right way area.
Okay, all right.
Anyone else? Any members of the public have any questions or comments? You could rotate it over.
I guess Ross Russell, 75, West Street. I think my big concern with the bulk storage is the salt, and ground up didn't sell salt. And I'm not sure that Lesser's Four Seasons is going to sell salt to the public. I mean, he's also in the commercial parking lot, plow business, is he going to take salt from there middle of the night and do it at parking lots?
I mean, it'd be likely that he would also use that person as well, so, yes.
But, so in a snowstorm, he'd be filling up trucks and for his own plowing stuff, right? He's all, I know he's in the commercial.
Yep.
So any hours of the day that we could have trucks coming in and out of there. It's not like a retail place that's open seven to five, or something like that.
The retail portion of this would have hours. If he's utilizing this for snowplow, yes, he could access that.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm concerned with the salt being on top of the aquifer. I mean, you say, you know, it's pavement and cement blocks and whatever, but it works till it doesn't, and then you've heard your aquifer. It just seems risky to me.
Mike, can you speak to that? Mike, can you speak to that?
I mean, all we can do is, this is best, best management practice, this is what's called out, I mean, that's what we can require, we will. I'm, I'm not here to make anybody's case for them or against them. But I gotta tell you, modern society expects clean roads within hours after snow, and they've been getting it, and they've been getting it with salt. Towns never use salt, we always use sand forever, and then they want them cleaner faster. Now we go out on just salt runs, straight salt runs, because that's what people expect. Any amount of salt that's dumped on Route 10 and West Street already, I, I, I don't know how much it is compared to what they're going to store, but it's already there.
I hear, I hear what you're saying, so it's already washing into the.
We don't, we don't, you know, we don't really think about it when we're going on our nice new clean road, but that's how it got so clean, and that's why it's all that white residue on it. Not saying it's right, not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying it is.
So with that in mind, and I know the town operates a salt shed, but is the, is it actually salt, or do they add something to it to keep it from?
No, that's salt.
It's just regular salt?
Well, yeah, it's salt.
Yeah, so is there, I mean, is that something we should consider? Um, we can't put a burden on them that the town doesn't have, but if they, if they change to a different type of salt that has some additive that, I mean, is there any concern there, or are we just expectations that are going to maintain this salt shed? And it, would it be periodically inspected to make sure it's okay, or hasn't degraded to the point where it's going to bother the aquifer, or?
We'd have to have, we'd have to have either the authority and/or the, the, the measuring equipment and/or, I mean, it would be, all you can do is, like I said, in these situations, we're stuck with best practices, and best practices are what they are at that moment in time.
Okay.
My question for Mike, was that salt shed building you were talking, wasn't that the town building you were talking about with the membrane?
Yeah.
And how it, it was constructed?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I just want to, okay.
I mean, water is, you know, water is, water in the Grand Canyon, you know, it's pretty powerful. We didn't have to do that, man. We've got three sheds, I know, two sheds, we've got that one, and there's the other parts all shut over it. Then I know of, well, in the state garage, but then if the, uh, the erosion, uh, over there.
In my part, they won't.
Yeah, I mean, in common, so.
Yes.
Like I said, it's just trying to meet people's expectations today, so it's different than ours, so.
How about the aesthetics of the, you talked about the block, law or cement block, can, can you request it be something more attractive, like the, I don't know what it's called, architectural brown blocks that might look nicer than, um, cement blocks with mortar? Or could it be grassy?
No.
Yeah, it wouldn't be visible from the public way, and there's also, we're proposing.
It would be visible from the neighbors.
Plantings all along the backside here.
Yeah, but how, how long's it going to take you for those to get tall enough and block the cars to sing?
In Swansea, they like to grow quack. They grow real messes.
Two houses, three houses to the left of that, I think it's a newer.
Yep, and these are all plantings here. This, this side, we, we've called out a stockade fence as well as plantings.
Yeah, but the salt's changed, so the salt is definitely true, yeah.
If, if they're successful with this application, that, that will be reviewed by the planning board. Within the four questions that we have, it's, it's very difficult to, to bring that in, unless someone were to make the argument that it would have an impact on property values.
I think the, and I want to say what Mike's coming from, if you come in and buy a house at the Fine Street, you know there's a salt shed there, you already know that going in, we don't have a salt shed on West Street. And I think the problem that's going to arise out of this, running the commercial plowing business, is that night loading trucks and backup alarms going off, you know, when, we don't have bulk storage there now. So we're not used to it, like the state shed, if you live next to the state shed, you, you hear it all the time. You realize there are plowings, but I think here, in a quiet residential area, that's probably going to be one of the concerns, is all hours of the night that they're going to be maintaining their parking lots, because it snows sometimes at night.
Snows often at night.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to, want to ask, John, the, the proposal is for bulk storage for the landscaping business, not bulk storage for a plowing business.
Correct, I would anticipate that they would be plowing as well, though.
But that's not what's, that's not what they're asking for right now, and so that's a little bit disingenuous if the plowing is going to happen using that shed, and that, and trucks are going to be coming and going out of the, out of this area. Nothing about the trucks, it's just the bulk storage question before us is presented as bulk storage for a ground-up-like business. And that's what we're hearing from you, and that's what we're asking.
It doesn't operate at night, I think, I think I, I just hear what you're saying.
So it could have restricted hours on when they access the, the bulk storage, the same as retail?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not sure whether we have the ability to do that or not, I'm just, I'm just saying that.
Yeah, but there's no definition of the bulk storage, I don't know that you could say that it's restricted to a time or a year.
Yeah, I'm not sure we could, but, but in this particular case, the whole presentation has been for a landscaping business, and landscaping doesn't translate to snow removal, or snow treatment, uh, to me, at least. So I, I'm not sure whether we could say that the bulk storage is only to be used for the landscaping business, because that's what this proposal's all about, or we could say that there's a condition that they're, that it only be used during retail hours. But I, I would imagine that that would be a handicap for, for the landscaper too, because they might want to, after retail hours, be able to get materials to work on their.
Because if it could be two or three in the morning, they need more salt, and they can't sit there and not go get salt.
Right.
So the question is, is how, is that something that's going to present an issue in the neighborhood? If they're doing it? It's going to happen in the winter, we know that.
Right. So, I mean, one of the.
Maybe at night, maybe not.
One of the things I'm wondering about is whether we could say it can't have salt on this property. Just wondering.
I, I just would remind the board that the property is in a business zone.
Right.
And some of the houses are in a business zone. And when, when people came to the board for a special exception for residential use, we always reminded them that they're in a business zone and subject to the operations of a business. And in this case, the, the, I've already said it, it's in a business zone, and I, you know, I, I live across from a factory, I can't determine whether they run one shift, shift, two shifts, or three, and I've lived there when they've had three shifts. And it was business on that side of the road, rural ag where I was, now it's residential, but I live with it. And I, I, I could appreciate the comments very much, but it is in a business zone, and I, I think we have to give credence to that. To my knowledge, we don't have anything in the ordinance when, to address issues where zones meet up. In this case, we have a business zone meeting up to a residential zone, but we don't seem to address that.
We don't have that in, in the regulations.
Not that I'm aware of.
The, the only thing that we have that addresses that is, um, the fifty feet between a residential structure and a commercial structure. So it's not really addressing zones per se, but, you know, so it would be potentially a further setback that would normally be required if, for instance, the residential butter was built right on the property line. The commercial could not build right at the twenty-foot setback, it would have to be, get right away from the residential structure.
And that's what you see right here, so that's good.
What if the salt shed was up near Route 10 instead of around that, and in the houses?
I can't read this.
I think it's a way of a wet one for a reason.
Is there a possibility of that, John? I don't think it's going to impact the beeping so much, but it might, haven't it, might reduce glare?
Typically, the planning board doesn't want to see dumpsters and, and, you know, a salt shed or that type of thing on the front end side. They want it hidden behind the building, which is why it was located behind the building, you know, where the dumpster pad is and out in the back. There is going to be, you know, we proposed a landscape berm, so the berm is a soil that's built up to be higher, so it'll help mask it, and then on top, there's plantings on that, that berm, to further mask it. I mean, the, the building itself has walls in the back, as we talked about, be concrete, be block, or, and a structure above it to cover it. I, I think it's in a good location because it's, it's not open to the, the Route 10 side and out in the open. It's kind of tucked away and it's well screened. If the planning board deemed it appropriate, then we could put more screening around it, or, as was mentioned, if there had to be a, a different type of block to make it look nicer, they could do that. I think location-wise, though, it's better suited behind the building. I think the planning board tends to, when we locate things like that, they want it hidden from the public way. So as located, it's, it's not visible from either public way, the town, or the DOT's public way.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just got one observation to, to share, maybe it can help us kind of move forward here. Would it be required for the applicant to have stated any of their proposed bulk, bulk needs prior to applying for this? Meaning, do they have to specify what they're going to be actually storing on property, prior to getting this application approved?
Staff requested that everything that they would be, um, bulk storage, all of the bulk storage be indicated on the plan so that the DVA would know what was being approved specifically, what materials were being approved.
So materials included?
Yes, and that's, that's no doubt that the, the site plan chief.
So was the site plan chief more specific than that? I can't read that. Wait until you get to be my age, you'll understand.
There's a quote under that note.
So all, all twelve were listed?
I believe so. I mean, this is one of the, the conservation question asked for, was what was being stored here?
Number fifteen reads, "Material to be stored on site will include colored stone, various sizes, colored mulch, sawdust, sand, gravel, slum, compost, and salt." And then below is the, "No bulk storage is provided, so have the materials stored on that."
I think they also added, because we talked about this a lot, that a lot of that was, I guess, to be sold. So I asked you, are you going to have large pallets of stone, except for only what's been pre-sold, so it's not actually stock? The answer to that question was, no, it's not, there will only be pre-sold, we're waiting to either install them or waiting for the rest of it to come in or whatever, but it's not going to be like, just massive amounts of stone just waiting for someone to come buy it someday, was how it was presented.
Right, so that, that area was added as a, as a pre-sold area, that's nice. So that's number two, that's a salt shed. Okay, that way it's not pallets, and they're like sitting out by the road, and visible to everyone.
The perspective I, the perspective I have from this, Adam, is this, is people will complain about properties on Route 10, and often, quite rightfully, so, so my first thing is I go to the file and I go, okay, well, what was approved? And I look to see if there were conditions and what was approved, because I can't come down on somebody if A, it was approved, or B, it wasn't necessarily excluded, exceptions obviously. But we're, we're trying to find, make it a little bit finer, so that when I'm sent out to do something, that we can signal, well, this was the deal, this is what you said, you're not doing it, knock it off, that's the goal.
That makes sense.
Is the applicant open to including the membrane that Mike spoke of in, in the interior of the salt shed?
I think that's the best management practice that the town uses, I would think, if they'd luckily agree to that. I mean, the best practice for salt management, so if the town's adopted that.
Okay, and I'm assuming that there would be a shelf life to that material? And whatever that shelf life is, would they coordinate with Mike to have it replaced on schedule? Would that be part of best management? What's that? You won't be here, then?
Yeah, well, that's what I was talking about, is how do we plan properly for the future?
Well, we, we document it.
That's good.
And that's, and that's the dilemma that I have with a lot of these properties, quite frankly, is the documentation is very weak, which makes my job harder, whoever comes after me much, much harder, because they don't have institutional knowledge theoretically.
You're doing a good job, Ken. Those files are getting better and better. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Board members? Mike?
Once you guys get through the questions, if a motion to approve is granted, we should consider one of the conditions being that the bulk storage be limited to exactly what is on the plat, exactly what is in the application. And that will help cover the town moving forward to ensure that maybe lesser sells to somebody else in future, and a future owner does not abuse the bulk storage use if it is approved.
Before we close the public hearing, the other aspect of the request, it has to do with distribution of material. Is everyone satisfied with the comments and questions that have been asked with regard to distribution? Good? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Close the public hearing? Anybody have any questions or comments before we get to the four criteria? Hearing none, do we agree that the proposed use is similar to more, to one or more of the uses already authorized in the district? And is it in an appropriate location for such use? Jay?
Yes, I do. Bulk storage is a special exception use, and this is, uh, for uses appropriate.
Thank you. Wayne?
Yes, I agree with you.
Adam?
Yes, for the same reasons as, as both gentlemen before, and, you know, landscaping business is a, um, one that's common to residential neighborhoods and important properties, so it's, it's, it fits in the character of the community at large, so, from that perspective, yes.
Ann?
Yes.
I'll agree. Would such a, do we agree that such approval would not reduce the value of any property within the district nor otherwise be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood? Adam?
I would say that there's been no testimony that states the contrary, that the value of the properties would be reduced by the operation of a landscaping business with bulk storage. But I think there is concern about the long-term effects of, 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 of salt storage on the, on the premises, so that maintaining, um, or any of the, of the materials that are listed here, like fertilizers or hazardous materials and so forth. So I would agree with Sarah's.
Just, just to clarify, the, the fertilizers and the hazardous materials they're stipulating will not be stored outdoors in bulk, assuming we use, we take Sarah's guidance.
Under Sarah's guidance, I think, you know, having that as a caveat to the, to a potential, you know, positive or, or affirmative for the special exception, I think that would be something we'd necessarily go kind of love with. So, yes, if we are to use that language in addition to.
Good, thank you. Wayne?
I agree with Adam.
Okay.
Yes, so, uh, the approval will not reduce the value of the property, and it will not be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive as long as we pass on our concerns about stormwater management and salt storage to the planning board, and follow Sarah's stipulation.
Thank you. Ann?
Yes, I'll agree with that.
I agree. Do we agree that there'll be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians? Ann?
I haven't seen any evidence that, that that would be an issue, it's on a state highway, the curb cuts are approved. Don't think we're going to see a lot of pedestrian, pedestrian traffic into the business, so I don't have a, I don't have a concern there.
Just a quick question, will, will they be bringing the entire to the planning board for site plan review, or will they be doing two separate?
There will be one application.
There'll be one, so like our comments with regard to the signage on the West Street side will be.
They'll all be in that.
Okay, thanks, Jay.
Uh, I, I agree with Ann that this is, uh. I agree with Ann that this is likely to be no nuisance or hazard for everything we've seen. The only thing I can see is that, you know, people will have to drive carefully as they maneuver around the parking lot where they're going to the interior of the property.
Thank you. Wayne?
Yes, based on what was presented to us.
Adam?
I would say yes, and I'd just add that, you know, as you stated before, this isn't a business district. There's expectations of business operations, there are business hours, you know, regardless of what this particular use were. So from that point of view, the considerations have been taken in terms of curb cut, you know, and turnaround and so on and so forth, where vehicle hazards have been minimized. And as Ann stated, pedestrian traffic is probably pretty minimal on a business like this. I don't know how many people would be humping back, mulching their backs to their homes.
Coming to wheel tacks lately.
Yes, so I think from that perspective, I think these concerns have been addressed, so yes.
Excuse me, I'll agree. Do we agree that adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use? Jan?
Yes, I think, especially if we add those situations that Sarah had recommended, we have the ability for the planning board to address the concerns that we've had during our meeting. Yes.
Thank you. Adam?
I would feel comfortable to say yes, as long as we, again, caveat like Ann stated, with Sarah's language as it pertains to what types of materials could be stored on site. This isn't a blank slate, bulk, anything. You know, this is specific to the property and the use of this property, which is a landscaping business. And the types of materials that are being used are those common to be seen within that type of business. So yes, from that perspective.
Jay?
The facilities are appropriate for the uses delineated in the application. I'd like to make sure that the salt bin is constructed in the way that the town instructs our salt bin.
From a foundation?
From a foundation, and with the membrane on the interior to provide additional sealing.
Okay, but not the, you're not talking about the bubble over ours? Because it indicated wood structure.
No, I'm sorry, I want to include the membrane is the extra layer on the inside of the.
And it is covered, it will have a roof.
It will have a roof, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Doesn't have to look just like.
Doesn't have to be a plot set.
All right. Wayne?
Yeah, I agree with Jay's point wholeheartedly, that it should have the membrane and the concrete and a few over it. That's the primary concern on salt. Yes.
Agreed. So, excuse me, we've agreed on the four criteria. What language would we like to add as condition? We want to have language that ties it directly to the plan itself with regard to the specific items that will be stored. We want to make sure that the foundation for the salt shed, which we're most particularly concerned about, is constructed appropriately with the membrane that was mentioned, and that it's maintained and replaced as needed.
Yes. Good addition.
Yeah, I had one more thing, Bill, just that the conditions are also tied to the use of this particular business, whereas I think the application states kind of broadly bulk storage. So we're talking about bulk storage as it relates to a landscaping business, not some other type of use where that could be hazardous.
Well, so on the sheet here, where it has the notes, and it says, "No bulk storage of fertilizers or hazardous materials will be stored on site." That's bulk. And, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't want to say that it could never store anything else there, but it can't be hazardous material, and it can't be fertilizer. So like if they had a different type of crushed stone, as long as the stone, like if it were artificial and was hazardous, they can't store. Do you see what I mean, right there?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, wood chips, I suppose is not listed.
Sawdust is listed.
Sawdust is listed.
So wood chips would not be permitted.
Exactly. And I wouldn't want to put that restriction, is what I'm saying.
That's what we're doing, though. We are putting that restriction on. The entire discussion focused on the list of items that they have.
Well, and I thought that it was limiting hazardous materials.
No, it was limiting it to the list of items that they provided.
And also recognizing the fact that they're stating that no hazardous materials, they're tied to what they list on the application.
That's key to me. I mean, that's the idea that we would not allow any hazardous waste storage there, ever.
They're not saying waste so much as hazardous materials.
Hazardous materials.
And fertilizers that would not be stored in bulk. Now, in terms of packaged fertilizer, most facilities have those.
Inside.
Well, outside for display, but the majority of what they have is inside, if you go to Hamshaw's or any of the others.
And that's fine.
Okay.
So just to clarify, my potential recommendation to this is that it is specific to the use that has been, been applied for, which is a landscaping business. And then furthermore, the materials specifically to whatever are listed on the plan, narrowing it to those and those only.
That's what.
That's what I'm.
And excluding the ones that are excluded on the plan, too.
Correct, correct.
Big Sarah's language was that it be tied to their actual proposal, in all respects.
Would the applicant, upon hearing that, if the applicant knew they wanted to store something else, would they have 30 days to come back?
They would have to ask for.
They'd have to ask for something else, okay. So that's, yeah, want to keep that in mind.
Anyone else have any comments? You got all that, Beverly?
I do.
Anyone care to make that motion? Anyone care to make the motion?
I make the motion, but I don't know exactly.
Beverly's got it.
Beverly's got it. I'll make the motion.
We have a second? Adam, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Okay, the ayes have it. And for those of you in the public who had concerns about the project, you two have, there's a 30-day opportunity to request a rehearing. That would mean tomorrow is day one, so anytime in that next 30 days, if you felt that we've made a mistake, we didn't consider something, you're welcome to speak with Sarah, and she'll give you the guidance that you can in a general sense to allow you to make a formal request for a rehearing. Okay?
That would be equal to next Thursday at 6:00.
Keith, are you ready to come back?
You can just finish up.
What's that?
You can just finish up.
I know. I've had too many of these Ex parte communications discussions.
I would move that we push the Ex parte law system. The reason for having it was for the new person who hasn't been to any meetings. So I would move that we move that until we have a full staff.
The motion to continue the discussion of Ex parte communications to a future date. Do we have a second? Your turn, Mr. Chairman. It's all in your hands, John.
All in favor? Any questions? Well, I had to hand to point, I think that was the purpose, because we did discuss this, I mean, two months ago, about the concern of Ex parte communications amongst those that are present. And, yeah, I think the new board members would benefit from that discussion.
Well, just do make the second motion, is that you, Adam?
I said it, yes.
I would make the motion that we close our meeting because very recent.
Can I have a comment with Ex parte? It's actually two comments. One, the new member was actually here for your discussion on Ex parte. She was not a member yet, but she was here for the whole conversation. The other thing is, the only reason it's still on the agenda is because that night you guys said you wanted it to be on the agenda every month. If you would like me to remove it from the agenda moving forward, I can, but it wasn't, it's not there because of the new member. It's there so that you guys are constantly thinking about it.
We should constantly talk about it.
I thought it would be useful for us to have at least once a year, a discussion with all of us, we'd be hashing the whole thing. It was my proposal, we have a yearly discussion.
That's an excellent idea.
So I think it might be worth it for us to have a 10-minute, 15-minute talk about what's available, what's acceptable, what's not. I'd feel a lot better if we ran through a couple scenarios and found what's appropriate. I think, you know, we run into each other at the grocery store, what, there are two of us, it's not three.
I know I'm not chair, but just timeout. You got a motion on the table?
We have a motion on the table, yes.
So let's talk about the motion, but that's the background of what I have, my support, as Sarah's got.
So is the motion just so we all know? We're pushing it off till May?
A future date.
Because Jay's got a great point. Yeah, okay.
She said a future date. She didn't indicate a specific date, did you?
No.
A future date.
Oh, well, that's, I mean, Sarah's got to put it on the agenda every month.
Well, it's fine.
We're talking so it gets easier.
Because I'm going to be at a Red Sox game at our next meetings.
Oh, so we know it's not going to be in May.
Well, just in the seconding the motion, why I second it, because I do think it's important that all members who are members of the board elected have this discussion together.
Yes.
If anyone has any discussions or questions as to what they should or should not do, or more than happy to ask, as it relates to the motion that was made to the committee, I thought it was important, that's why I said it. All right. The others, then? Are those in favor of moving? So by saying aye, I oppose? Kick it down a little. I agree with having anybody here at the same time. Especially with a new member, but still. All right. Anything else to come before the board? Hearing that? And move to the board? Second?
Second.
All right, move and second it. All those in favor? So by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television, located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is 802-463-1613, or email us at fact810@gmail.com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.